Welcome, everyone. My name is Councilmember Colin Nash. The mayor will be joining us, will not be joining us for work session. We'll be here at the 6:00 PM meeting. With that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Halliburton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Stead.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, clerk. First item on our agenda today is interim budget changes from Eric. Eric, take it away.
Thank you very much, Council President, members of the council. We have four interim budget changes for your consideration. Our first item is an $11,000 revenue neutral appropriation increase, which would accommodate grant funds awarded from the U.S. Forest Service to be used for maintenance within the foothills. Our second item is an $820,000 revenue neutral appropriation to build a new permanent restroom in Rhodes Skate Park. That project would be supported by two funding sources. First, $500,000 that was budgeted as part of the fiscal year '24 adopted budget within the major repairs and maintenance allocation for the Parks Department specifically for that restroom. Secondly, $320,000 in community development block grant funds. The current restroom has been closed for several years due to ongoing design and maintenance issues, and the style of this restroom would be comparable to the urban restroom at Cherie Buckner Webb Park. The third item is a $2.3 million investment of American Rescue Plan Act funds to extend the non-congregate sheltering contract with Interface Sanctuary for one year, starting April 2024. Current sheltering capacity in Boise and Ada County is insufficient to meet the needs of households experiencing homelessness, including medically fragile adults and families. Staff has determined that temporary shelter space at a Boise hotel and associated services are ARPA eligible and recommend using available uncommitted funds to extend the contract for one year. ARPA funds are available due to underspend in the ARPA community needs programs as well as administration category. Finally, $1.2 million increase is recommended for the taxi lane N extension project. This project would extend the taxi lane to provide general aviation to future corporate hangars. Funding for this project was originally approved as part of the fiscal year '23 budget, but was inadvertently not carried forward into fiscal year '24 as part of the annual rebudget process. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Eric, I had one question about the ARPA funding for the non-congregate shelter. I assume either an executive decision was made or a previous council set aside ARPA funds for some specified use. Could you give me an idea of what was the bucket that these ARPA funds came from? Were we always intending on using them for these purposes? Yeah, tell me more about the source of these funds.
Council President, members of council, I'll do my best with this question. There was allocations made upon the city being awarded ARPA funds in 2021, I believe that was, for various categories, including community needs. There was a wide distribution of resources and various community partners that were awarded these funds. So I'll first speak to the categories. There was investments made towards housing, towards various climate initiatives, community needs. And I think there was a $10 million allocation made towards community needs, and then administration. Within the community needs category, there was savings as well as within the administration category. And I could certainly return back with more detail on how those items were initially, how those funding towards the communities was initially allocated.
So are you saying that these funds for this come out of the community needs and also savings to other categories?
Council President, yeah, the second category is from the administration. So it was from the community needs as well as from the administration.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Eric? We also have Maureen Brewer here, who can probably speak more directly to the program this is funding.
Yeah, Council President. Hi, Eric. When we talk about the ARPA funds, and you had mentioned that these were uncommitted funds, by uncommitted funds, do you mean they're funds that are not currently placed on a contract or a purchase order? Is question one, and then question two is how many uncommitted funds do we still have in these five buckets?
Councilmember, thank you for that question. The answer to the first portion of your question is yes. These are funds that are not committed for a specific contract. The second question, I don't, I apologize, I don't have readily at my fingertips at this moment, but I could certainly provide that for the council.
Councilmember Halliburton.
This is probably a question for Maureen, if you don't mind. So last year, at about this time, Councilmember Willetts and I approved funds for folks staying at the Red Lion, medically fragile families, and originally, I think it was a spot where we were really trying to separate people because of fear of people catching COVID that were medically fragile and families at the shelters. And it was a big investment then. It's a big investment that we're looking at right now as far as the use of these funds. And so my question is, should we expect to see this again in the future? I think my hope last time around is that all of the great investments that the city and you and our staff have made in permanent supportive housing would get us to a point where we weren't having to continue to invest funds in shelter. And so I'm kind of trying to just, I guess, read the cards a little bit more for the future. If this is something that we need to keep on our radar, if we have opportunities to invest funds in other areas where we may not have to invest again in shelter next year. So any insight you have there would be helpful.
Sure, sure. Excuse me, Council President and Councilmember Halliburton. Over the course of the next year, you're right, we had a similar conversation about this last year, about this time. And over the course of the next year, Our Path Home can responsibly phase out the non-congregate shelter. What we need, though, in order to do that, is direction from leadership about when they want Our Path Home to come together to work on those plans and what that transition might look like. Because we have been, and when I say we, I mean the Homeless Services Partnership, and in partnership with the city, has been trying to, as you alluded to, Councilmember, line up a pipeline of permanent supportive housing, and that pipeline is coming. We expect to have permanent supportive housing units online at the Park Apartments early next year, followed by at New Path 2.0, which should break ground this summer, followed by another 50 units of permanent supportive housing at the Fulton, which is the site adjacent to Fire Station 5. Now, whether or not that aligns perfectly with when we phase out the Red Lion remains to be seen. However, that being said, with a six-month or so runway, the partnership can collaborate to work on a hotel-to-housing strategy. I don't want to overpromise and say that everybody at the hotel will be able to transition to permanent housing. That's why we're bringing on new permanent supportive housing dedicated to households experiencing homelessness. What I can say with confidence is, given that runway, knowing that COVID relief dollars are coming to their tail end, if you will, especially for this purpose in emergency response, what I can tell you is that gives the partnership time to find safe and adequate alternatives, even if that safer, adequate alternative is to another congregate shelter setting or to transitional housing, for example.
Great, and maybe just one follow-up there. I think that you said something in there at the end, I think that's important maybe for us to recognize and realize, is that there may be some beds that are available right now where folks who are staying at the hotel could move into. There's also probably people at the hotel who really just probably can't be in a congregate shelter because of medical needs, because of separation of families and a few other things like that. So it's kind of a combination of both, right? There are some people that might be able to be moved into existing shelters if those partnerships at the shelters, you know, really worked out, if other newer shelters came online. But we would still have to be finding probably separate solutions for some of those medically fragile or families that may not actually have an ideal or a real functional spot at one of our existing shelters. Is that correct?
Council President, Councilmember Halliburton, that is correct. And the partnership is committed to, Our Path Home is committed to finding those alternatives. We'll need time to do it, and we'll need time to work collaboratively with partners, including both of our hospital systems. For example, on those discharges that currently the hotel is receiving for those that are medically fragile. Our congregate shelters are not set up to provide hospice, and they're not set up for home health care, which is, for all intents and purposes, what's being provided currently at the Red Lion. So with your direction, we would use this next year to work with partners to make those plans, especially for our most vulnerable community members, including those that are medically fragile.
Great, thank you. That's probably all I have for now. I can probably save any comments that I have for the actual motion.
I just, I just add to that. I think council would be interested in a dialogue with Our Path Home about how we could responsibly wind down the short-term program. I think council is committed to long-term solutions in this space for the families that are experiencing homelessness. I just add, as of last night, we have 20 families currently utilizing this program, including 45 children, and then 18 individuals that are medically fragile. But I'd be interested in a dialogue soon so that we can work collaboratively to make recommendations on what this program looks like, so we're not surprised with future requests, and just want to integrate our support for both this and long-term solutions in this space. Any other questions for?
Mr. Mayor.
Jordan does.
Okay. Councilmember Morales?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I couldn't agree more with kind of what you were saying in terms of my thoughts on that. I did want to ask, you know, if we, as we approve this budget item, does that number change as, you know, current residents are housed throughout the next year? Or is that budget number the same regardless? And does that also assume that no new residents would be added throughout the next year?
So it sounds like, are the costs for this program variable? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Maureen?
Council President and Councilmember, by and large, the costs are not variable, in large part due to the lease itself. I would also note here that the city must obligate all of its state and local fiscal recovery funds, all of its ARPA funds, this calendar year. So the plan would be to fully expend those as they are obligated this year. And then to your point about essentially vacancies and how full the non-congregate shelter has been and how full it might continue to be, one of the city's performance requirements over the course of the last year was that it had to maintain zero vacancy for all intents and purposes. Going forward into this next year, if direction is to phase out the non-congregate shelter at about that six-month mark, Interfaith will need to, the shelter operator, will need to stop filling vacancies so that we can wind down the project.
Wonderful. That's what I wanted to, and that was kind of my, how that, when we determine what that runway is going to be, when that's going to start, how that would work. So thank you.
Councilmember Willetts?
Yeah, thank you, Maureen. Question in terms of the cost. So last year was roughly close to $700,000, and this year it's almost triple. Why the difference?
Council President, Councilmember Willetts, each time that Our Path Home has had to go renegotiate the lease with the hotel operator, the lease cost has gone up. That's the primary difference. I have it broken down. I don't have it with me today, but I could, or in this moment, but I could send it to you momentarily. I have, Eric has it for me since I sent it to him earlier. This is your question. I'm just kidding.
It's nice to find a friend, isn't it?
Thank you. So the Red Lion has been open since May of 2020. And we, Our Path Home, I have to keep checking myself on the use of my pronouns. Our Path Home has had varying capacity at the Red Lion during that time, so that's a factor too, Councilmember. But the lease cost has gone up every time. So initially, this was funded with CARES money. That's how it started. Then transitioned to FEMA, and then transitioned to what's called ESG CV. ESG means Emergency Solutions Grant, and CV is under the CARES Act. Went back to ESG and the combination of ESG and County SLFRF or County ARPA. And that is when we came to council for the first time last year to talk about a general fund contribution. Because at the time, we didn't know where the city was necessarily going to net out with unallocated ARPA of its own. So to get back to your question, Councilmember, we have funded it through federal sources designed for this purpose explicitly, among other eligible purposes. And each year that we've had to go back to either the Red Lion or a new funder and renegotiate how many floors we have and how much we're paying for those floors, the cost has fluctuated and increased.
Maureen, talk to us a little bit about, because we've used so many different funds, including general fund, what it would take to have something more permanent there? Or has there ever been an opportunity to bid this out? And I understand in May of 2020, there wasn't really an opportunity to do that. You took what you could get. But I'm just curious, now that it's almost four years later, what our thoughts are on that.
Council President and Councilmember Willetts, a couple of items to note in response to that. Since March of 2020, Our Path Home has utilized various hotels across the city. Because of the Red Lion's proximity to the congregate shelter, it has been, I don't want to say ideal location, but it's been something approximating that in that Interfaith staff have had to operate, for all intents and purposes, at two different sites and sometimes three different sites over the course of COVID. There was also a point at which the partnership evaluated whether or not it would make sense to buy a non-congregate shelter, and that was extremely costly. And given the uncertainty of all of the fund sources I just mentioned, and sort of the moving target that FEMA has been, and then the nature of the application process to ESG CV, which is administered by IHFA, and then the nature of the request to the county, there's been a lot of uncertainty as far as how it's funded, and a lot of uncertainty around that timing. And so when you pair that logistically with running a shelter and moving folks from hotel to hotel, it's been extremely challenging, even doing it in the one location. So that being said, the partnership has done the best it can with that mix of uncertainty, given fund sources, the shelter operator that we have, the only low-barrier shelter operator that we have, and sort of their staff constraints and capacity constraints.
One more follow-up. Maureen, as I recall, last year, it was a very similar conversation that more housing was coming, Interfaith would be up soon. What makes this different than last year?
Council President, Council President Nash and Councilmember Willetts, I don't know that we're in a remarkably different place last year as far as the non-congregate shelter itself. We have advanced all three of those PSH projects I mentioned that are currently in our pipeline. We acquired the Park Apartments. We have a real timeline as far as when rehab and move-ins can occur there. We've got a groundbreaking scheduled for New Path, and then we're securing financing sources for the Fulton. So what has changed from a year ago is that we have moved forward on those three in particular supportive housing projects and have much firmer timelines as far as when we expect those to be ready to move in.
Thank you.
Councilmember Corliss?
Maureen, I want to thank you for being up here and answering our questions. I do have a couple. When we talk about medically fragile, I don't know if we have any type of data on is this temporary medically fragile? I'm thinking like maybe broken arm, broken leg, but I have no one else to take care of me? Or is this maybe a long-term medically fragile? Maybe elderly who may get minimally better but not expected to get better?
If I could, I was told that all of the medically fragile individuals are seniors, but maybe, Maureen, do you have more information about what that population looks like?
President, Councilmember Corliss, I can add a little color there. Yes, I'm sure they are all seniors right now. Most of the time, they are. In the instances when it has not been a senior, it might be that it's something that can be treated or provided care in the non-congregate shelter and then transitions back or transition to a different housing situation. However, it is a mix. Some folks that are staying at the Red Lion or have stayed in the past need hospice, some are terminal. And then others, it's things like wound care, where you're not necessarily sick enough to stay in a hospital setting, but a congregate setting would not help you heal from whatever that might be that's going on. So it's certainly, it's certainly a mix. So I'm imagining with those medically fragile patients and the elderly that are there, housing, they're going to need some sort of housing that's going to provide them medical support ongoing. Is that fair to say? Council President Nash and Councilmember Corliss, yes, that's fair to say. And the intention with the Fulton in particular is to provide a higher level of service than is currently provided at New Path. At New Path, if you move in there, you're expected to be able to complete your ADLs, your Activities of Daily Living. At the Fulton, what the partnership is trying to do is strike the balance between assisted living, which some folks might need, or even skilled nursing, and what we currently have at New Path and New Path 2.0. So a level up of services where there's assistance with those activities of daily living, but something that falls short of licensed assisted living. Two more questions. I thought the contract did a really great job of outlining the expenses that's included in that $2.2 million. A lot of it is staffing, which is needed. Do you know if they are fully staffed? I guess it'd be Interfaith Sanctuary staffing that. And then the second question would be, Maureen, if we're looking at a six-month runway to get through this, does Our Path Home or, and do you and your team have the resources to make that happen? Council President and Councilmember Corliss, as far as I know, they are fully staffed at the hotel. Staffing shelters generally is challenging, so certainly there's turnover that occurs there. And then the second half of your question, I believe, was about whether Our Path Home has the resources to responsibly phase out the hotel. It will be challenging, which is in part why we need, why Our Path Home needs that extended runway. It will be challenging from a staffing perspective, certainly, because all of these households will need heavy sort of one-on-one case management, housing problem solving, which happens as a matter of course now. However, the most challenging part, Councilmember Willetts alluded to it, is aligning folks at the non-congregate shelter with a permanent housing opportunity. And where those might be, given the timeline we have for those PSH projects to come online, and then the interim time where we might find, where the partnership might find permanent housing opportunities for folks that were trying to exit from the Red Lion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're a little behind schedule, so I'm going to ask for a motion.
Council President, really fast, can we get a clarification on what the lease amount was for the last year before we move forward? That's it.
Council President Nash and Councilmember Morales, I don't want to misspeak here. So let me confirm it before I guess. I know what we were at a, I know what we were at a room rate, but I just want to make sure I know exactly what the lease has changed to before I misspeak.
Does Eric have that information, or is that?
One second. Council President, Councilmember Morales, part of the reason that I don't have this readily available is because the city is not a party to the lease. So let me see if I can get this for you.
Councilmember Morales, if I could just interrupt you. Maureen, would you be satisfied if that information was provided to you by council meeting tonight? We'll vote on this contract again at that time.
Yeah, I think that'd just be great to have that accurate number. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll be right back then.
Sorry, Maureen.
And I would just ask, I am not acting mayor, so she's still in town, so you can just call me.
Okay, Council President Nash, I move that we approve the interim budget changes.
Second. Any discussion? And I'll add that we'll also have a discussion on this probably tonight again, but if you feel so compelled.
Mr. President, just a couple of things here. One, I want to just start out by thanking the staff and the mayor's office for how hard they've worked to bring permanent supportive housing onto the table. We'll see a lot of those projects coming up in the next year, and a ton of them coming up in the next year and a half to two years. Another thing I want to make sure that I bring up is the folks that are staying in the hotel right now, these are our neighbors. These are fellow community members, and facing the same barriers that they face, the same circumstances, many of us could be in a similar situation, and keeping them in a shelter, keeping them at a hotel when a congregate shelter may be not the best place to be, is the right thing to do right now. And I really do believe in that. At the same time, I think that for myself, and I know other council members, we are looking for permanent solutions. I think that there is some heartburn in continuing to invest in shelter instead of investing in things that are really going to permanently put these people who deserve it in a place that's much better for them and a place that's more fiscally responsible over time for the city. It's cheaper to have them in a shelter than it is on the street, but it's cheaper to actually get them in permanent supportive housing long-term than it is to continue investment shelter time and time again. I think that you all are going to face challenges in trying to get everybody out of that hotel within the next year. But I think that if we could, we need to be moving in that direction, and we need to be pushing hard as we can to figure out if we invested the same amount of money that would cost in the future into that hotel in the more permanent solutions, could we get them into a better place and a more permanent place sooner? And so that's something, you know, again, that I would like to see is, how can we make sure when this comes in front of us next year, we've done everything that we can to invest funds in a more permanent solution rather than continuing to invest in shelter? I'll certainly be supporting the motion. It's the right thing to do now, and I really, really do believe that. But I do need, I do think that we need permanent solutions in the future.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Corliss?
Yeah, thank you, President Nash. I appreciate it. I agree with everything you said, Jimmy. These are our friends, these are our neighbors, and these are the most fragile community members that we have. And I think that, you know, I think any of us is happy to see this type of money invested in housing that's not going to be permanent but is actually needed. I do believe, I think Jordan brought it up, that at some point in time, we do need to, even though we're going to pay, likely pay
I do believe, I think Jordan brought it up, that at some point in time, we do need to, even though we're going to pay, likely pay for hotel rooms through a year, there has to be a cutoff point in there somewhere, and maybe that's another team or other people that will work on those people maybe six months or seven months from now on not transitioning into a hotel, where do they go to? So I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that and the resources that are going to be needed for that as well. And I will be voting yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Council President, I have the figures, at least the room rate, if that's helpful, and I can come back with the totals if you want. Last year, the city was paying $69 a night per room, and this year that rate went up to 75.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willitts.
No.
We have five in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, clerk. All right, next up, Hannah Brass Greer from the mayor's office with the post-vehicle removal cleanup ordinance. Councilmembers, I just, we're about 25 minutes behind schedule, so keep that in mind with the questions that we're asking over these next couple of presentations. But I appreciate the robust discussion around that very important item we just had.
Hannah? Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers. Hannah Brass Greer from the mayor's office. I'm here today to discuss potential proposed amendments to an ordinance to deal with post-vehicle removal cleanup. And if you are like some members of our office, you don't know what I'm talking about, so I'll explain that right now. So the problem that we're facing right now is an increased issue of personal property. Sometimes it's debris, sometimes it's trash, sometimes it's, it's personal property that's left on public property, often in the right of way, in the roads, in bike lanes and sidewalks. Specifically, this happens often when there is a vehicle that has been parked somewhere, it moves to a different location or moves out of the area and leaves property behind. There's confusion about which agency should be involved in the cleanup. Oftentimes, we, we have conversations with ACHD, but a lot of times the complaints or concerns come into our code compliance office, and we have code compliance and/or BPD out there already able to do that. Our pain point is that we don't have an abatement process or option written into our code for this situation, and so we're trying to address that. So a, as we looked at what to do here, our overarching goal is really to be able to clean up this property as quickly as possible to avoid any risks that, that it could cause. We are attempting to model this after nuisance abatement. For those of you who were here when we did some changes to graffiti, it's a similar model. So we would define personal property that's left on public property as a nuisance. And then we would allow for summary abatement, so immediate cleanup of that property if it poses an imminent or ongoing threat to health and safety. So like I described, if someone left stuff in the roadway, in a bike lane, that would cause a potential risk to health and safety. We'd want to get that cleaned up as soon as possible. If, if property is left and it's not posing an imminent threat, then we would go through a 24-hour notice process. We do that in other situations already. We would leave notice for the property owner 24 hours later. Either they have come to claim their property, or if not, then we would abate that property. The code would also allow for storage and recovery of the property, so that information would be left in the notice for folks, so they know where and how to claim their property. And again, going back to the goal of cleanup, that's what we're focused on here, not additional penalties. And that's it. So I'm happy to take your feedback or answer any questions about the approach we plan to take. Based on your feedback, I would come back to you either with a draft ordinance for first reading, or if you want more discussion and more detail, I can come back with that as well.
Council?
Yeah, I have a question on the storage piece. So as I drove, thank you, President Nash. What I see for abandoned items or really trash, broken down couches or garbage, are we going to be storing those?
Council President and Councilmember Corliss, it sort of depends. So generally, right now, when we do abatement in other situations, we use, we contract with a company and there are certain guidelines about what we can and can't store. So items that, it's, it's not specific to if it's a couch, we'll store that. If it's, you know, a piece of paper, we won't. But if, if the property is wet or soiled, we can actually store it. But if it's not, and, and it was a couch, for example, then we would store that for a period of time and allow people the chance to come claim their property.
A quick follow-up, President Nash, what's the term of the storage, the fore end?
Council President and Councilmember Corliss, I don't know right now the specific. I can come back to you with that. I could follow up.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick comments. One, I think this is really, really great. I think it's very consistent with how we're doing some of our other things. I think about an abandoned bike policy that we put forward several years ago that has a very similar sort of structure to it. And so I really appreciate the direction. And I guess one thing I might add, because we ran into it with abandoned bikes, is there does, there is a situation where after we've held it for a certain period of time, we have to figure out what to do with it. And, you know, if it, if it has any value whatsoever, usually there's a place we could direct it to, and there's probably a nonprofit partner, the Youth Ranch, or somebody else that we could be working with if there are things of value that have been in there a certain amount of time, but it might be nice to have that defined. But I think that's a great direction.
Thank you.
Councilmember Willitts?
Hey, thank you. I'm really looking forward to this change. I had a couple of questions because if we move this to first reading, we wouldn't have a public hearing, I'm assuming. And so what sort of feedback have you gotten from law enforcement and, and those who would be subject to this?
Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Willitts. I worked with law enforcement. That's how this first came up in conversations with what they were experiencing just out on the streets and what they were seeing. And that's where we had seen sort of the increased incidence of this happening. So they, they're in favor of this would be law enforcement and/or code compliance that would be involved with the cleanup here. So they are, they are in support of this. And then we haven't gone out to other, we haven't obviously had a hearing, we haven't done any, any other public engagement on this. Certainly, public hearing, you all can decide whether or not you would like a public hearing, or if you'd like me to come back to another work session for more discussion.
Council President, I am in favor of this. I think it's a great step. We've, we've talked about how we address behaviors, and I think this is a behavior we can address. I would like us to have a public hearing because I think that's good governance, even though it's not required.
Any further comments? Okay, thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll move on to city childcare overview with Kate Nelson from the mayor's office.
Good afternoon. Kate Nelson, Director of Community Partnerships in the mayor's office. I'm really pleased to be here today to speak to you about childcare. As you might imagine, this is a big topic with lots to cover. So my goal for today is to provide you with a brief background. What does childcare look like in our state? What does it look like in our city? How has the city supported our childcare industry and some future considerations? So I'd like to start off with emphasizing the importance of quality for early childhood education. And you will hear me refer to ECE and childcare interchangeably. That move has made like on a national level towards early childhood education to recognize the importance of this work, certainly moving away from previously daycare, childcare, and now ECE. With that, I think it's really important to, to center us on the effects of quality childcare on the overall health and well-being of our community. Quality early education has been linked to better outcomes in adulthood through various peer-reviewed research studies. We know that cognitive development is greatly influenced by access to quality care. Language development, problem-solving skills, and just overall better cognitive skills have, again, all been tied to peer review research from, that have occurred over the decades. Social and emotional skills are another key component that is directly tied to quality early education, which promotes social and emotional skills such as empathy, self-regulation, and conflict resolution. Children who receive positive socialization experiences in early childhood are more likely to exhibit positive pro-social behaviors as adults. Education attainment. Participation in quality early education programs has been associated with higher rates of educational attainment in adulthood and higher graduation rates from high school. Economic stability. Access to quality early education can have long-term economic benefits for individuals and our society as a whole. Studies have shown that children who participate in early childhood education programs are more likely to enter the workforce, earn higher incomes, and contribute to economic productivity in adulthood. Additionally, early education can reduce reliance on social welfare programs as demonstrated through, again, a large body of research. Health outcomes. Quality early education has positive effects on physical and mental health outcomes across the lifespan, not just in youth. Research indicates that early childhood experiences influence health behaviors such as smoking, substance abuse, and obesity, as well as overall health status and life expectancy. These findings underscore the importance of investing in quality early education as a means of promoting positive outcomes for children to extend to adulthood, benefiting both individuals and our society. So the landscape in Idaho is unique. As you may be familiar with, Idaho is the only state in the country that allows local government to license. This means that we have a voluntary certification program in Idaho. Our state has elected to utilize the requirements, the bare minimum requirements set forth by the federal government. The city of Boise has a longstanding history of placing a high degree of emphasis on quality. And for that reason, the city opted to license child cares as a city for many years. The city has four different types of childcare licenses. Two types are in-home childcare. There is a group license in addition to a childcare center. Because of the historical emphasis on quality of care, we have smaller ratios between teachers and smaller ratios between kids enrolled and teachers. We also have additional requirements for the physical environment. Of course, this means that there is a trade-off. With more staff needed to provide care for a smaller number of kiddos, that increases the cost of operations. With the additional education that our childcare providers in Boise are required to attain, that also increases cost. So there's certainly a balance to be struck between quality and affordability. I had the, a conversation very recently with the individual that's responsible for the law, the nonprofit that provides the most childcare in the state. And they let me know that after reviewing all the costs, what it would truly take for them to provide the level of care is $1,500 per kiddo per month. Now, they have economies of scale. For much smaller child cares, that equates to upwards of $2,000 per child per month. With childcare so expensive, many families are left with a choice.
Kate, can I ask a quick question on that? Is that, that isn't determined by age? That is just if you took all children that needed childcare? So it's not, that's not delineated by infant or toddler or school kid?
Correct. These numbers are not. These are the average.
So the, but the 1,500, that's what it costs? That's if they took all of, all of their costs and divided it by kids, not by?
By age group.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So families are often left with a choice whether it makes more sense for them economically to stay at home or remain in the workforce. While there is little data available, both nationwide and in Idaho regarding what the childcare gap is, a report from the Bipartisan Policy Center estimates that there is a 30% childcare gap in District 2 of Idaho. However, on a brighter note, Boise's childcare system has seen small growth in the number of operational facilities and a net zero loss of childcare workers between 2022 and now. There are currently 215 facilities in Boise. There are six licenses in stages of approval. And this is up from 195 the previous year. Since January 1 of this year, the clerk's office has received 268 childcare worker applications. I shared this slide a little over a year ago, and I thought it was worth sharing again. These comments came into us from childcare providers when we were contemplating the allocation of our funds, specifically what we refer to as incentive pay. We heard from so many providers that were truly in crisis. All of these that are, all of the individuals that are quoted here have been childcare providers for 20 years or more. You can see that they really struggle with maintaining staff. You know, staff live in our community, and it's not surprising, given increasing rents across the city, that the increase in rents is causing them to consider whether or not they can truly afford to participate as childcare workers, even though it is what they feel is their calling. Guidance from the administration of children and families has unequivocally supported the increase of compensation for childcare workers as a mechanism to stabilize the workforce. They've stated that raising wages is a central part of stabilizing the industry and strongly encourage the use of bonuses and incentive pay. So to this point, what has the city done? We recognize that there are really a finite number of tools that we can utilize in order to reduce the cost of childcare for families. These include things like subsidy programs, public-private partnerships, streamlining regulations, investment in early childhood education, and expanding city programming for children, such as the summer camps at Parks and Rec. As you can see from this slide, the city of Boise has already taken action on all of these fronts. From the economic, on the economic development side, recent work with Micron and their childcare facility has included rezoning their parcel, which now allows for mixed use. Originally, it was zoned as T1D as a tech park with the work of Sean Keithley and the economic development team. Along with the planning and zoning update, it was rezoned and allows for a large childcare that is underway. The city has collaborated with CCDC to prioritize projects that include childcare as part of the project. This practice was in place when Block 68 proposals were evaluated, and the outcome of which yielded the selection of YMCA's transformational project. As the city's first land trust housing project, Franklin and Orchard will also be the home of the newest branch of Giraffe Laugh, a nonprofit childcare organization that provides quality early learning and family support. Giraffe Laugh is an ICCP provider, which means it accepts the state's subsidies for low-income families. As a result of this project, there will be 72 to 80 slots at this site. As a part of our recently approved modern zoning code, childcare facilities are now allowed by right in all mixed-use zones, as well as in-home for up to 14 children. This significantly expands the childcare opportunities in our community. And last, but certainly not least, as economic development director Sean Keithley mentioned in his presentation last week, childcare is included on his team's strategic plan. Moving along to the next piece, in 2022, nearly $2 million of city of ARPA funds that came to the city of Boise went directly to Boise childcare workers in the form of a $1,500 childcare incentive pay. This positively impacted 1,220 individuals who were working in Boise facilities during the pandemic, representing well over 90% of all eligible providers in the city. The average wage for the child, for a childcare worker in Idaho is just $12.13 an hour, which equates to a little over $24,000 a year. Based on these numbers, the $1,500 represents a 6% increase in the average worker's annual salary, not insignificant. The city received a lot of very positive feedback regarding this program from parents, providers, and childcare facility owners. In addition to the $1,500 checks, Kyle Patterson and Samantha Beck in the mayor's office successfully led an effort to reduce childcare facility and licensing time and costs. To better serve in-home providers and the families who depend on them, the city made several process improvements. And this led to a reduction of time for folks to wait for their licenses by 60 days and a reduction in fees by $230 for facilities serving six to 12 children in that business. I want to thank Jamie Heiserling and her team for the tremendous amount of work they put into reducing administrative burden for childcare providers. And last, but certainly not least, the childcare license application fees are currently being covered by the city through general fund dollars for all new applicants. And this is really to incent folks to enter the field. As you could tell from the numbers I previously mentioned, wages are low. And as they stand without this assistance, it costs about $309 to attain a childcare worker's license. So it has been very well received and we continue to see a lot of applicants noted by the previous numbers. This brings me to future considerations. Yes, Council President?
Can we talk about that for a sec? When I came into council, that was one of the first presentations that we had were some of the process improvements that came with our application. One thing that I might be interested in exploring, if I remember correctly from that presentation, there are some federal requirements that we require fingerprinting on an annual basis because we cannot maintain those fingerprints. And how, if we can't keep those, we have to get rid of them. I would be interested in exploring some type of third-party clearinghouse that we could maybe work with state officials on to set up so that we can still do those annual applications, but have those, avoid the need to fingerprint on an annual basis. I'm wondering if that's something that's on your radar or that's been discussed at all? It's my understanding that Florida might have set up something like that so that they could continue their licensing and avoid that hiccup with the federal requirement. I'm just wondering if that's something that's been on your radar? It's something I'd be interested in exploring at least.
Yes, Council President Nash, it has been a source of ongoing conversation. There was a convening that began, oh gosh, probably about eight years ago. That was titled, you know, childcare issues meetings. And it was a diverse group of stakeholders that continued to come together. And certainly, the issues with the reauthorization of the childcare block grant, which have these new requirements for annual fingerprinting, has been a a source of continued challenge, in particular when folks have lived outside the state. And oftentimes, some states have elected just not to share records because of the administrative burden. So I would say that that is a lot of negotiating on the federal level and discussions what the state can do to remain in compliance, particularly when there are certain things out of our control that are prohibiting meeting those requirements. I don't know if that answers your question directly. I would summarize by saying it is very much on our radar and is something that we are actively having conversations with on a regular basis.
Thank you.
I have before you four future considerations. First is in regard to the ICCP program. This is the Idaho Childcare Program, and again, the program that the state facilitates in order to subsidize childcare costs for low-income families. Participation in the program is completely voluntary. In addition to that, to be an ICCP provider means that you have to meet certain criteria, complete ongoing paperwork. And there are certainly a number of barriers that have made a number of providers opt to either not enroll or disenroll because of the administrative burden. There is an opportunity to address the existing shortage of these slots by providing a financial incentive for providers in Boise. Another consideration I'd like to propose is modifying the ratios for programs such as Just for Kids, which is run by the Boise School District. Currently, the city of Boise requires a childcare provider, one childcare provider for every 12 kids ages six to 12. This, of course, has negative impacts on the financial solvency of programs for school-aged children. Just for Kids is advocating for a ratio of 1 to 15, which is supported by NAEYC, the top-tier crediting organization in the country for early childhood education. Without this modification, JFK will need to increase rates for parents by 30% to maintain operations this coming year. I will also note that Just for Kids has advocated for this modification of ratios, not just for themselves, but for all programs that serve older children. So again, those that are ages six to 12 and require either before or after school. Another opportunity to explore is expanding our Parks and Rec program. Our Parks and Rec program serves hundreds, if not thousands, of kids every summer. This programming is affordable. It introduces new ideas, new experiences, while having kids experience the outdoors and being physically active. Additionally, many of the summer camp sites are delivery locations for free meals, which is imperative during the out-of-school months. Like many parents, I am ready to go come April 1st. I know I need to log in at 7:00 in the morning on the dot to get my kiddo registered for these camps as they fill up within 15 to 20 minutes. Adding additional sites and programming in our growing city is a sensible way to support families and the overall childcare system. Additionally, adding staff to resource youth drop-in centers is another opportunity to explore, as well as providing some more training for those staff to deal with things that they have, that are always difficult and have continued to spike in recent years. And I'm specifically referring to negative behaviors that are cropping up within, within our youth, whether that's in or out-of-school recreational activities, that's something that we're hearing a lot. And lastly, continuing the annual childcare incentive pay. Given the success of the incentive pay program previously, a lot of Ps there, considering an annual stipend of $1,000 for childcare workers is a way to incentivize folks to stay in the field. Anecdotally, the stipends we provided with ARPA funds attracted childcare workers to Boise from surrounding areas, encouraged existing workers to stay in the field, and attracted workers who were previously undecided because they weren't sure that they would be able to afford to stay in the field. I personally received phone calls from childcare owners that were in tears, thanking the city for valuing the profession, and they felt seen in a way that they hadn't previously experienced. That wraps up this portion of the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Kate, do you have a number on what a $1,000 stipend would cost if that were administered in a way similar to the previous incentive?
Yeah, approximately $1.3 million annually.
Council President?
Councilmember Morales?
I'd just like to say for future consideration, it'd be interesting to know how many in-home childcare or early childhood education centers we have in Boise. Because, you know, I know we've got to do so much work for those childcare centers that don't have this stability. But for a homeowner that maybe graduated in the field or whatnot, there is a, there isn't that maybe rent barrier, right? And in terms of affordability, you know, we had one of these in-home options in our neighborhood for decades. A few different folks ran it, and just the community that it brings when it's all of our neighborhood kids, then they go into kindergarten together, right? And so I've just really been pondering how we can make it easier for folks that have these backgrounds that left the field because it wasn't paying, but maybe own a home now in their neighborhood and want to get back into it and how to help. Help them instead of, maybe it's not even an incentive to get them back in, but just showing how easy it is to do or how we can help them do it. So just maybe a future consideration I'd like to maybe hear more about.
Thank you, Council President Nash and Councilmember Morales. That brings to mind another opportunity, which is to work with HOAs and help with education advocacy around allowing for childcares to operate in those communities.
Do you find that that's a barrier right now?
Council President Nash, that is certainly something I have personally encountered prior to joining the city in utilizing, again, those education tools and talking through concerns, also mitigating traffic that's perceived to be an issue. And sometimes working with volunteers, attorneys have all yielded really positive responses. The trick is to get ahead of the development of those communities and be proactive when those HOA rules are being developed.
Councilmember Morales, I think there might be a sympathetic state legislator in your neck of the woods that would be open to working on that issue. Councilmember Halliburton?
Kate, one of the things I just, I want to say that I really appreciate was during COVID, all the work that you did with our nonprofit partners, Giraffe Laugh being one of them, which is one of our best-run nonprofits in Boise. And it was so helpful to know that the solutions that you helped bring forward were generated by really the people that were, you know, experiencing some of the issues firsthand. And so I think it's really important that we continue to have those really close relationships with those partners. Because I don't know what the solutions are, but I know that you're doing a really good job at working with these folks and hearing from them. And then council has to, I think, have some trust with you and them on what are the things that are really, really effective. So I appreciate you always bringing those, bringing those forward. Really excited about Giraffe Laugh's new location at our affordable housing complex on Franklin and Orchard. And I hope that that's something that we can figure out, how that might work at other locations as well. And then really excited to see the one at Micron. And I remember us approving the zoning, it was such a weird zoning change in an area where all of a sudden we were going from industrial to childcare. But it made so much sense. And one of the things I hope we can do, and this is probably direction for both you and Sean, is how can we convene some of our businesses the same way that we've been convening our childcare providers to figure out how they can continue to be a partner with childcare? Because I would love to see them continuing our different businesses that are bringing folks to Boise, find ways that we can help incentivize them or provide support for them to have similar types of projects come on board. Every single time we have an application that we approve on council and there's commercial mixed in with residential. We had one of these happen last week. I always ask, like, what's going to be in that commercial space? And my hope is that they're always going to say childcare, so that there can be onsite childcare at some of these spots. And so if there's ways where we can be convening and trying to figure out what some of those business barriers are, I would love to hear those as well. I really appreciate all the hard work.
President Nash?
I think Councilmember Corliss had him.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate, for the information and and for also providing some solutions for us to consider in the future. Really appreciate having that thoughtfulness of looking at, hey, here are some things that we can do as a city to consider and to take a look at. I just have one quick question, and I know the state does some licensing, but I think that's independent if the city or county doesn't have licensing. But my question is, does the city of Boise also work with the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare with their programs, because I know they do a lot of licensing, offering training, et cetera? Thank you.
Council President Nash and Councilmember Corliss, great question. And yes, we have some fantastic partners at the Department of Health and Welfare that oversee the childcare program. I've had the privilege to sit on the Idaho Childcare Policy Panel, the statewide panel, for several years. I continue to participate in that. And we are regularly in communication about changes that come down from the federal level that have implications for our state, as well as advise on best practices. You know, we're really fortunate in Boise to have an opportunity and a very, very much a sympathetic and listening ear, both at the state and across the state among providers and other experts in the field.
Councilmember Sted?
Thank you, Council President. Thanks, Kate. This was a great presentation. The city's obviously really invested in this as an economic issue and a personal issue for so many families. So I really appreciate the information. And I think if I remember correctly, Idaho is one of three states that doesn't fund early childhood education from the state level. So I know that that causes some extra burdens for us to try to fill that gap a little bit. This might be a comment for Parks and Rec, but I would definitely support expanding the play camps. I have also heard my friends for weeks being very nervous about that April 1 registration morning and making sure they get their kids covered. So I'd love to hear more about what that might take to expand those options too.
Councilmember Willetts?
Yeah, Kate, thank you. There's a lot to unpack here. Couple of, couple of comments and then two questions. I said this last week, but I think that the state that figures out childcare will be the economic powerhouse of the nation because it is so disorganized. And we need, parents need care for their children. Businesses need employees. And we really don't have a system in the United States to, to help families in this area. The other thing that I think you've pointed to is that it's the worst possible situation because it's expensive for families and the people that are working in childcare don't make money to stay. So it's not something that they, even if they have the passion to do that, they're not able to do it long-term. So with that in mind, because we're here to talk about solutions, I have a couple of questions. We've talked about making it easier for folks to open childcare, particularly in neighborhoods. If I were to start tomorrow, how long would it take me to get a childcare operation in my home up and running? And then second of all, can you talk about your involvement with the Boise Chamber of Commerce on this issue as it relates to business and getting folks to do this? Thanks.
Council President Nash and Councilmember Willetts, those are really great questions. I'll take the latter one first. So in partnership with Sean Keithley, that will be a partnership that we're really excited to deepen in terms of working with the Chamber of Commerce to tackle this, knowing that it is a priority of our business community. And the Chamber is such a strong continued partner of ours. Sean, is there anything that you would like to add specifically on that?
Council President Nash, Councilmember Willetts, thank you for that question. And I think this is something that we, we will certainly continue to work with the Chamber and allied organizations on and work, in particular, I think, in the space of being a convenor and amplifier to ensure that we're using our network and our ability to reach folks in the business community through folks like the Chamber to make sure that we highlight these issues. I'll also just mention that under the umbrella of the Chamber, the Boise Valley Economic Partnership, the main business attraction organization that's part of that overall umbrella is a great convenor and also has the ability to work through their business attraction efforts proactively with organizations that help to bring new businesses to Boise to continue to highlight that issue and encourage its need to be integrated into things that are part of, you know, our, our new business environment here in Boise.
And as to the former piece about states being able to figure this out and the importance of doing so, it is really exciting. I mean, the 30% childcare gap is significant, and that is much less than the national average. We, I think we're in, up to the challenge, and it's kind of exciting to think of it in that manner. I would also just share that Boise has been invited to participate on regional and national panels to talk about ways in which we've addressed and expedited the process for particularly in-home childcare providers. The question as to how long it would take for individuals that are, have low literacy levels, no previous formal experience running businesses, but are able to receive very targeted technical assistance for three months, we've seen very significant success in them being able to receive a license within, you know, three to four months. However, without that type of support, it can vary widely. As you might imagine, it depends on schedules, folks, their ability to navigate the process on their own. So that has also been cause for us to continue collaborating with Idaho Stars Project and Idaho EYC really closely in order to provide, excuse me, to develop things such as business toolkits. That's kind of like a business in a box. So that's just one example of the ways in which we are trying to continue to support individuals that are interested in particular with starting an in-home childcare business.
Okay. No further questions? Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
All right, last item on our agenda is an overview of the geothermal system with John Gunnerson and Tina Riley of Public Works.
Council President.
Go ahead.
Do we wait?
No, you're fine.
All right, Council President, members of council, thanks for having us here tonight. Good afternoon, my name is John Gunnerson. I've been overseeing our geothermal program for over a decade now. Been with the city for 16 years. And so tonight, myself and Tina Riley, we're going to take a moment to share something about kind of our favorite topic here at the city, and that's our amazing geothermal program that we have. We are going to, we are going to divide and conquer here. There's a lot of neat stuff to cover around our geothermal program. And so I'm going to start here, talking a little bit about the history, the overview, and kind of how our geothermal program works. And then Tina's going to take over and talk about what makes geothermal special to Boise and addressing some of our current challenges, successes, and funding going forward. Okay. So starting with some history, Boise has a really rich history in geothermal. Historically, along the Boise front, along our foothills, historically, there were dozens of natural artesian hot springs. And these hot springs, these were used by, for centuries for indigenous tribes throughout the region. These naturally heated geothermal waters were considered sacred waters. They were used for everything from wintering to bathing to cooking to kind of being used year-round, but mostly in the wintertime. These hot springs continued for, again, for centuries until around the late 1800s, when there were some predominant developers here in Boise, specifically like CW Moore, Eastman, a couple of the early developers of Boise had the idea to start piping this water, to capture this hot geothermal water already coming out of the ground, put it into pipes and send it into Boise. By doing so, I'm sure we've seen pictures of the historic Old Naterium building, the grand structure. And they ended up piping this water to the first house to ever be heated by it, that is the CW Morehouse on the corner of Warm Springs and Walnut. This in turn created what is noted as the world's first geothermal heating district right here in Boise. So this, the seating district got a lot of success, continued to grow. And about 80 years later, in the 1970s, there was, our country was going through some energy crises, and Boise was looked on heavily for this natural resource that's already been proven and is already successful here. And so it was in the early 1980s, the state of Idaho, the feds, and the city all decided to get into the geothermal business to start using this natural resource for, to offset different energy demands, specifically fuel heating that was being used heavily here in Boise. And then we fast forward a little bit to today. Today, the city of Boise geothermal program, it is the largest geothermal system in our country. And with the opportunity to, that our, this geothermal program just checks all of the boxes related to a lot of our carbon and climate action goals. So quickly here, on the screen you see a map, this is downtown Boise. You can see the Boise River kind of flowing from east to west there. The green line, I'd like to point out, and the green line on here is this historic Boise Warm Springs Water District, again, the one developed in the 1890s. This is still a geothermal system that is in operation today. They're serving about 350 homes north and south of Warm Springs Avenue. Then I'll take your attention to the light blue line there, that's kind of right in the middle of it all. That is our state of Idaho geothermal system. They have a production and an injection well. They are heating our state capital. We have the, our country's only state capital to be heated with geothermal, right here in Boise. And they also heat the whole Capitol Mall complex, I believe about 12 buildings there. Lastly, take your attention to the dark blue line. That is the federal geothermal system that is operated and maintained by the Veterans Administration. They're serving, they're heating the Veterans Hospital and about 22 buildings up there on the VA campus with geothermal water. But specifically, I now want to take your attention to the red line. The red system is the city of Boise's geothermal system. This is the one that we have been operating and maintaining since the early 1980s. We have grown now to, we're serving 96 buildings. These are 96 of the largest buildings that we see downtown, anything from hotel buildings to the courthouses, to the bank buildings. You can see on the map, about a decade ago, we went across the river and we're serving now 11 buildings at Boise State University. In total, all of this area that we're heating equates to about 6 million square feet that's being heated by our geothermal program. And I say heating as in building heat, but this water is used for more than that. The water is primarily used for building heat. The heat that we feel here at City Hall is heated by our geothermal system. But also, if you go to our, to our restrooms here, the water that is heated here, excuse me, the water here is heated by geothermal. And that's something we're seeing more and more of. About a third of the buildings across our system, the system are also heating their domestic water. So now we're seeing more of a year-round usage of it. And then, and then lastly, there's about a half dozen sidewalks, snowmelt systems, different buildings throughout downtown, and a couple other miscellaneous direct use applications. But the majority, again, is going back to these 96 buildings that we're providing the space heating for. So how, how does our geothermal system work? Our, our geothermal system is a very simple system. There is no large power plant. There's no big mechanism to be producing this water. This water is occurring naturally. We simply pump it out of the ground with not much more than a large irrigation wells. We're pumping this water out of the ground. We deliver it, deliver it through a network of pipes through downtown. Buildings take the heat off of this water. And then we collect this water again through a second set of pipes and we reinject it back into the same aquifer it came from, making this a truly renewable, sustainable resource that's going to be around for generations. The water that we're pumping out of the ground, it's 177 degrees Fahrenheit. On average, buildings are taking about 50 degrees of heat off of this water. And then again, we're collecting it and reinjecting it at temperatures about 120 degrees. Before I hand it over to Tina here, I, there are a handful of myths about our geothermal program that I'd like to debunk here really quick. Couple of facts. The first one is that geothermal can be and is more affordable than natural gas. So this cannot only be, you know, one of the most environmentally friendly options of heating a building, this can also be one of the most affordable options to heat a building. Another one is the reliability of our system. We've been keeping metrics on the reliability of our system for over six or eight years now, and the reliability of our system is on par. It does match other large utilities. The difference that we encounter, and maybe yourselves have noticed, is when we do have a geothermal leak in our system, it creates a very optical event. We have steam coming up out of the ground, and a lot of times, it's not that big of an event, but it just looks grand. And the news cameras love it, and it just, it's, it's very dramatic, but really not a whole lot's going on. You know, in the, in any water industry, leaks are going to happen from time to time, and we just often don't hear about the viola leaks or the regular water leaks. Another really important concept, I mentioned it on one of my previous slides here, but the concept that this water is never consumed or used. This is a closed-loop system that we run. Again, we're pumping the water out of the ground, taking heat off of it at buildings, and then reinjecting it. Every gallon of water that we pump out of the ground is a gallon of water that we're reinjecting into the ground. So, so no water is ever consumed or stored from our system. There are other districts here downtown that still are consumptive use. There's a couple homes that you can still turn on the faucets and get the natural geothermal water coming out of, but, but that is not how our system is operated. I had mentioned our system is extremely simple. Again, that's always a surprise whenever we're giving tours or presentations, is they are very simplistic wellhouses. We go into the basements here of the buildings. The way the heat is extracted from the water put into a building is very simple compared to other, you know, electric or gas boilers that have a lot of mechanical moving parts, exhaust, et cetera. They also take them a much smaller footprint, and that's something that we like working with engineers and architects, because every square foot that you're building downtown has a cost associated with it. And so if you can heat your building in a much smaller area, there's value there as well. And then lastly, I hope it goes without saying, but I do want to put it on here as well, is our geothermal water is used for these heating purposes. We are not converting it to another source of energy. So we're not producing power from it. We often, we often hear that, you know, City Hall served with geothermal, but the lights aren't served by geothermal. It's, it's the heat that's coming into the building. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tina, who has some really neat stuff to share specifically about, again, some challenges and successes that we have and that we're going to be facing.
Thank you, John. Council President Nash, council members. I'm Tina Riley, so I'm going to continue where John left off. And am I too loud? Is that okay?
Tina, you're fine. I just want to note that it is raining, and sometimes we have a hard time hearing up here. So if the rain gets louder, we might ask you to pause for a minute, but right now it's bearable, but, but it's getting there.
No problem. So I'm going to talk about how GSML helps to make Boise special. And so we find with GSML, it has this story that just pulls people in. And so John's talked a little bit about the history and, you know, shared about the Native Americans and Warm Springs Avenue, and even how we got into it at City of Boise. It was because of the oil crisis. So we have really an economic basis for why we even got into it in the first place. Something I want to add to this, so Iceland, the country of Iceland, they rely on geothermal for their heating. 70% of the country is heated by geothermal. They point to Boise as the origin of the application of using geothermal to heat a building. So not only with this program do we have a great local benefit, but we've had a much broader global benefit as well. So we have the oldest system in the world, the largest system in the United States, the only capital building heated by geothermal, and all of this because we have a unique geological setup that enables us to tap into this amazing resource. The benefits also tend to really resonate with people. So it's a clean form of energy that helps us to meet our 2050 climate goals. It is local, affordable, and sustainable. So what John talked about, we pull the water up, we borrow it for its heat, and we put it right back in the ground again. So this important water resource that we have, we're not even using it. We're borrowing it in order to be able to heat buildings. So I'm going to pivot now to the current state and challenges. So we are seeing a great uptick in demand for geothermal. So we've had a 26% increase in the growth of the system since 2020. And to kind of put that in perspective and frame that, that is the equivalent in emissions avoided to 145,000 gallons of gasoline per year. Or if you're thinking about carbon sequestration, it's the equivalent of planting just under 30,000 trees a year. We have, as John mentioned, 96 buildings that are hooked up to the system. We have eight firm commitments that we are also, folks we're working with. And then we have a list of an additional 16 businesses that are interested. And so when we say businesses, we're talking about the large developers downtown. So great, great source of demand. We see amazing support. When folks learn about GSML, they quickly become advocates because it's such a great system. And so the system really is poised for growth. On the right, I've listed the challenges, and I'm going to spend the next few minutes unpacking these a little bit. But essentially, the challenges are our water rights, infrastructure modernization, and funding. So with regards to water rights, we have a non-consumptive water right that we can develop out to 385 million gallons a year. And just as a reminder, this is a geothermal water right, so it's very different from potable water. So we have, if you look on the right, we have in dark blue, the current customer base, the vertical axis is millions of gallons a year. Light blue are the customers that we have firm commitments out to. You see the red line, 385, and then in green are the interested customers. These are customers that are interested out to kind of the 28 timeframe. Some of them will pan out, some of them won't, as we talk to them, as they design their system, they will look at feasibility, they will look at a number of other scenarios as well. So not all of these will pan out, but you can see that we have a huge community benefit for this natural resource. And so we are working the water right angle from every, every angle that we can in order to enable us to let everyone who is interested in connecting be able to connect. I do want to highlight that this strategy does have an overarching respect for this natural resource and also for the senior water right holders. That includes Warm Springs, which obviously has, is a, has a part to play in our history. So the three main strategies that we have, so the first one is we have an efficiency pilot. And so we are working with a mechanical engineering company to go into a number of our buildings to see what efficiency gains we can find in order to be able to free up additional water. And so this has two benefits. The first is that it will bring down their costs. The second is that it enables water to be freed up for additional customers. The second strategy is that we are working with Parks and Rec to identify unused geothermal water rights, and we are looking at banking them in the water supply bank with the Idaho Department of Water Resources. And so we have one that we're currently banking that's around 65 million gallons a year. So we're in the middle of the administrative process around that and hoping to be able to pull that out later this year. The third one is that we are working with the other stakeholders to develop a groundwater management plan to enable us to continue to grow our water rights within this area. The second challenge is GSML modernization. So why do we need to modernize? So the picture on the left shows why. So I took this picture, this was New Year's Eve downtown. We had a leak, and as, as John said, we get a lot of media coverage when we have leaks. It looks like Batman's about to show up. So we, we definitely, it's something that we really need to focus on. And so, as John mentioned, so our reliability is actually on par with other major utilities. And so as John mentioned, so our reliability reliability is actually on par with other major utilities and you can see here ninety-nine point six percent reliability. However, when we have a leak, it negatively impacts our downtown community and it in particular impacts our businesses. So while our reliability and our statistics are good, this is something that is incredibly important for us to get on top of. So what does modernization look like? It looks like replacement of our aging infrastructure. About forty percent of our system has been modernized. And so this is a combination of replacement of aging infrastructure and newer vintages that are are already modernized. And so I do want to, you know, take a moment to thank City Council because you guys have had a part to play in helping to allocate funds in order to have the modernization that we already have today. And we are seeing less leaks today than what we were even just a few years ago. We still require around ten to fifteen million to complete modernization of the system. So we are working to identify funds and I'm going to talk shortly about the types of funds we're going after. One comment I want to make though is that we are very aware that the funds are taxpayer dollars and we work incredibly hard to make those dollars stretch as far as possible. And John is a master at working with um A C H D and also partnering with C C D C to make sure that anytime that the road's already going to be opened up, that we're using those opportunities to look for where we can replace geothermal. We get a much um, a much cheaper um replacement when we do that. And we also minimize the number of times that the road is getting opened up downtown and we all know that that happens quite frequently. So with regards to funding, um, two types of funding that we look at, modernization and growth. And we have been exploring federal funding opportunities um in the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and also the Inflation Reduction Act. Something that has been unfortunate is there, I mean, there's been three hundred and seventy billion dollars that's gone to the IRA um funding appropriation. And within that, geothermal gets the teeny tiniest little slice of the pie. There's an organization in, um, it's a global organization called Geothermal Rising. They are the largest geothermal like organization globally and also in the United States and their executive director actually lives in the North End. They are working really hard to change this. And so they are working on an appropriation bill that would be substantially larger for geothermal for twenty twenty-five onwards. And so the feedback that we have received when we've spoken to decision makers for grants that we've applied to but have not received is that firstly, it's competitive because a lot of folks are all going for this little tiny slice of pie. And secondly, Boise is the gold star for geothermal. And so I've got in big blue letters, our challenge and our opportunity is that we're Boise. And so our challenge, so by this, our challenge is that the geothermal community does look at Boise and says, you guys are what we want other places to be like. Um, and I think our, that is also our opportunity because nobody wants the gold star to be tarnished. And so I think it's really important that our message gets to the right folks in the DOE and other decision makers to understand, yes, Boise has been a leader in this space and we're really proud of that. And w- we have a modernization challenge that we need to address and we do need these funds in order to be able to address them. So in summary, you know, I think geothermal is a great source of pride for Boise. Um, we've highlighted some of our our near-term challenges around water rights and system modernization. And I think we, we are very aware that we have our mayor who's incredibly supportive of geothermal and raises the flag for us whenever she goes to Washington, et cetera. And I, I think that's something that we're going to continue to want to be able to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, I have a couple of questions off the top, one. Um, if acquisition of water rights were not an issue, do we have an idea of like what the capacity would be for our geothermal as a resource?
Council President, um, so the ultimate capacity of this resource is going to be the thermal capacity. So, so I'm a geoscientist, actually, so that is something that, sorry?
I'm glad I asked you then.
Yeah, so, so that is something that we have limited subsurface data. And so it's, it's difficult to to come up really with um a range on that. One thing I will say is that the system is incredibly robust. We have had um no thermal decay in the system that we've, that we've been able to um see so far. And the, the degree to which it's getting used and as it's growing, that we're not seeing thermal decay is a really good sign that it's a very robust system.
A second question, I know water law and water rights are rather complicated and politically fraught issue. Um, uh, since Boise is unique in what we'd be using the water for, does, does the, the legal framework that exists statewide, is it conducive to the type of water uses that we need and the types of water rights is that we're trying to secure?
So in Idaho, for temperature above two twelve, so boiling point, the regulatory framework um does not require a water right. So for low temperature geothermal, which is what we're in, that's considered eighty-five to two hundred and eleven degrees, it does require a water right. So, so based on that, yes, we require a water right, even though we aren't consuming the water.
Are there any other jurisdictions you're aware of that might have carve-outs for um that kind of target water right?
So yes, I am aware of other states that handle this differently, where if there is an injection well, um, there is not a water right required. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Council President, sorry.
Yeah. Councilmember Halliburton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, um, first of all, John, Tina, I think you have two of probably my four favorite jobs at the city of Boise. Um, I've got my pin on here to to prove it, so I appreciate your work, I can tell that you care about it tremendously and it's, it's so valued at the city. Um, beyond sort of like the legal cost of pursuing all the different water rights and stuff like that with these historic water rights, if all of a sudden you are able to acquire one of them or if one becomes available, is there a cost that's also associated with it?
Council President Nash, um, Councilmember Halliburton. So that depends, it depends on the nature of the water right. Um, the, the water right that we had, that was a water right that was at Quail Hollow, that we had acquired, the golf course. And so that is something that we were able to, we're able to bank. There is a very small cost associated with that, the administrative cost essentially of that. I don't know that there is a market that has been established for a acquisition other than that.
Yeah, so that, so the, in other words, the cost isn't prohibiting us for accessing those water rights, it's just the technicality and the application process, legality, all those types of things, not a funding issue.
Yes.
Yep, well, again, I appreciate all the amazing work, I would encourage you to keep doing it and you certainly have supported this council member. Any other comments? Councilmember Willis?
Did Jordan have a comment?
I'm sure, he better. This is his thing.
Go ahead, go with him.
Well, I don't know that I, Council President, I don't know that I can claim it as my thing, but um, yeah, I definitely, I think um, this presentation was really great, I want to thank you for all of your work, uh, maybe alleviated some of the concerns, you mentioned the media, I got some good giggles out of that over here on mute, um, and just kind of worried about, yeah, the seeing kind of that funding gap and wondering, you know, how that might be plugged and it sounds like we're, we're just kind of doing the work as we, as we can in hopes that we'll see a little bit more federal funding going towards infrastructure like this that is so huge, so important and just really love how you highlighted that, so. Um, I think, I actually don't have any further questions, I really loved the presentation, thank you.
Uh, Tina, you may have mentioned this when I stepped out, but given that Boise's geothermal resource is so unique, um, does that make it difficult to secure certain federal grant funding and um, do, do they see us is what I'm asking?
Council President Nash, so thank you for the question. The challenge is less, I think, around it being um that Boise is unique and more that this, the slice of the pie is small. So within the geothermal community, Boise is definitely seen, and when I say geothermal community, I'm also talking about the Geothermal Technology Office in the DOE, so there is definitely, we are seen by, by those folks, the challenge is it's being so competitive.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, thank you, this is uh excellent presentation, I uh know that we really have a unique asset here and I'm so glad that we are doing as much as we can with it. I have a couple of questions, one is have, have we used any federal funds to date to modernize the infrastructure? And then have we had any conversations with our federal delegation, particularly with Congressman Simpson on the appropriation side?
Council President Nash, Councilmember Willis. Um, so thank you for the question, so, so I've just pulled up a chart that catches the costs that we have um spent in the last few years and breaks it out by APA, the federal fund, C C D C, general fund, et cetera. And so you can see that it's dominantly being funded by the, the APA funds, the federal funds. And to your question about Congressman Simpson and earmarking, so yes, we have had recent conversations with Congressman Simpson. Um, he was incredibly supportive of this and so that is something that we are planning to apply for um as part of the upcoming appropriation period.
Okay, anything else, Councilmember?
Yes, I do have a question, thank you, President Nash. Um, if money wasn't an object, can the system be ran out to the farther reaches in Boise? I'm thinking micron, the bench.
Council President Nash, Councilmember Colas. So thank you for the question, the, and this, this is something that we um, we do look into a lot, so the, the constraints are around proximity to this geothermal system, which really runs along the foothills area. And so if you remove the constraints, you know, that you had mentioned, you ha- we have the ability um to explore for additional um geothermal wells along that what we'd consider a play area, an exploration play area for geothermal. As you get further away, the one thing that I would then begin to propose, so as you get up onto the bank, it's not going to be feasible. But then what I would propose is ground source geothermal. So that is where you, so you know in your basement how it's, it keeps the standard temperature around fifty-five degrees. And so you can then, if you have a, a ground source and a heat pump, you can then heat from that point or cool from that point, so you use a lot less energy. So that is what then you could, you could look into at that, at that point, but that's not using our geothermal system that we have in Boise.
Okay, thank you for the great presentation. Um, yeah, we love learning more about this resource and uh let us know how we can be supportive of its development and maintenance. Um, I don't see anything further on here and we don't have an executive session, so we're going to recess until six P M, we'll see everybody then.